I'll call the meeting of the regular meeting of the policy committee of the Cambria Community Services District, call this to order. And I see that we have a quorum with one member absent, member Richards is sick. We all send our best wishes to her and hope that she recovers quickly, and this isn't the beginning of a longer illness. Certainly, these are not times where one wishes to be sick. I mean, it's not fun, but sometimes it's worse than others. So I'll just jump right in with the chairman's report. It's a little more lengthy today. Let's see, first of all, just to go over the things that are on my list that I haven't yet done that I probably should have done. I have to confess, this pandemic sometimes puts me into a state of limbo, or I think I have something due, but then it can be done tomorrow, or the next day, or the next day, and to get into this sort of a what shall we say, a COVID paralysis or something. So I haven't, I'm apologizing in advance for perhaps not doing some of the things which according to my notes I should have done. I'll just mention those briefly. Ted, apparently I was supposed to call you regarding vets hall fees, so that's still on my list. Haven't, at some point I'll give you, if you don't remember.
Yeah. Yeah, I just don't know where that's where that's going, to be honest, Don, but go ahead.
Okay, well, I'll cross it off, then it's a, well, I'm going to mention that again later on in another context. And the other thing, it looks like, oh, no, wait, that was the wrong one. Um, oh, you guys are waiting for me to talk to the other, my fellow directors regarding their practices in terms of answering correspondence. So that's some information you're waiting for me on. Just to let you know, I haven't forgotten it. And then Claudia, I haven't forgotten that I'm supposed to have sent you the mission statement that we had approved, along with our potential policy on policies, so that will be forthcoming eventually. So don't, don't take my name in vain yet. Give me another day or two. Then moving right along, but those were the open things that I had that I realized as I was preparing for this meeting that I hadn't done. So one thing I did this time around is to review every, you know, if you recall, I had that rather long and complex spreadsheet, trying to keep track of everything that we've been doing. And I found that we basically set for the, since last June, we have had at one point or another thirty-six different projects on our plate. That's eighteen months, almost two a month, so it's a huge number. It does appear maybe things are getting a little out of control, but anyway. So I wanted to let you know kind of where we are on those thirty-six different things. A number of them, of course, have already been passed to the, advanced to the board, and they've either been accepted or rejected or put on hold. However, of the, of the projects, a certain number, three are, have been postponed till December, let's see. Two are postponed, waiting further information. And again, that one had to do with the vets hall fees, so Ted, that was, so that's just, that's on hold until we get more information. Speak up a bit, can't hear you?
I said, I don't know where we're going with that, honestly. I don't know that we're going to be doing a policy for that, you know, until John and everybody else figures out how they're gonna put together money to change the roof.
Well, we'll leave it on for a bit, just so, but it's, we might fall off, but any rate, it's just postponed. We know that we needed, we know that we looked at it, we know that we needed more information, and it's kind of sitting there. And of course, it's not a life or death situation, so it's, there's not a lot of movement on that one. The other one is, oh, the issue disaster preparedness, and again, Gordon, I think you had asked to kind of basically kind of put that one on hold until something happens on, I think, the fire department, I believe you're waiting on.
We're getting feedback from the chief, but with all the fires, it's been a challenge, I think, to put that together yet.
Yeah, I think we'll probably have to wait for the rains before, before you get a chance on that one. So those two, those two projects are waiting, but they're just sort of out there. Of the others, three of them are postponed, I postponed them till hopefully our December meeting, and these two of those have to do with stuff that I'm actually supposed to be doing. So I'm expressing a thought that I may actually get that done in the next month and a half. One of those has to do, Amanda had asked that the 2013 and 2020 bylaws be compared, and to see if there were policies in there, in the old 2013 bylaws, or there were things that were in the bylaws that were removed from the 2013 bylaws, and Amanda was concerned that those should become policies. Apparently, the board went through a period where they were trimming off a lot of the excess material out of their bylaws, and Amanda was concerned that some of those things that got dropped from those bylaws perhaps should have been enshrined as board policies. Oh, yeah?
Do we have a list of 2013 policies that you're able to compare?
I'm supposed to give you a list. Yeah, no, that's what we're waiting on is me.
Heard this question come up. I just didn't know we had a 2013, so.
Oh, well, way back, yeah, 2013. It was a long ago, but so that was one that I've been asked to look at, and so I haven't passed it on to you guys because I haven't had the information yet. The other one that is waiting on me is an inventory of the district's existing policies. You know, what are they? Where are they located? Which ones have we already touched? Issues is possibly, once we have such an inventory, maybe we can make a determination as to anything that perhaps is either missing or might need to be addressed.
Already?
Yeah.
Pardon, we've put together a list together, I thought of what was existing and what needed to be worked on a couple of times. That was originally done way back when.
Oh, well, John Warbuck eventually, early on, did one list for one section of the policy manual. Yeah, well, this is building on that, actually. What I did have, when I, I have a, I have a huge spreadsheet where I've looked, tried to figure this out. Part of the problem there is that the district's documentation isn't always in the same place. So part of the issue here is that I'm going to need to get together with Haley to find out where the, where some of these policies actually live, because I have a suspicion there's a, there is an official drive upon which the district's policies probably reside, but that's just, so those are waiting on me, and I'm hoping in a month and a half that I can bring something back to you regarding that. The other thing, which is again postponed, probably again to our December meeting I'm proposing, has to do with the modifications to the transfer of development credits that originally came to us through a letter from Ted regarding developing of street-to-street property with very limited street frontage. What so far, Leslie and I have been working on this, and so far, remembering that what the board asked was, they were very reluctant to do this unless they had two things that in front of them. One is, what other lots might exist in the town that would be affected? Should we put that word contiguous in all the spots that we were hoping for? Because they were concerned if some properties were then taken out, were no longer to be considered developable, that could cause some issues that, and so if that were the case, the board would need to go in with its eyes fully open on that one. The other thing, and this is where I've been looking more closely and without much success yet, is searching through the county code and the North Coast Advisory Plan and the local coastal plan to see if we can find, if there's any indication of intent. Because our original logic was that we felt that our code, that the code, it was actually an omission, that the code actually intended to produce a certain result, and we determined that without the word contiguous in there, then that intent wasn't being fulfilled. Well, now then, but we need more than just our assumption that there is an intent. The board would need to have actually some clear indication that that was in fact the intent. And the other issue, of course, is if they become more restrictive than the county's requirements, that raises some interesting problems. So I'll come back to you eventually with that one. But so far, the research, the search has not revealed much. In fact, yeah, yeah, Ted.
I just make one comment. You know, the situation over here was a situation where you had two people who owned two unbuildable lots that decided to merge it. Now, here, here's, here's, here's the issue. You will find many more of these circumstances in Cambria. The question is, you know, without being able to merge those properties, people wouldn't be able to develop on them anyway. So the only way that it can happen is, is, is through a sale or merger. But does that necessarily make the lot, or does that, how does that prevent people from developing? I don't know, I guess you'll have to, I guess you'll have to look at that a little more carefully, but in this case, it was sort of an oddball. You had, you know, a mom and pop type of thing that went on, and they merged it, and it got through, and there you go. But I think you're right, I think that, that you'll have to talk to the sewer department too, to see if in fact the original intent of, of the opening for that was, you know, to prevent overdriving the sewer system. So, yeah, I mean, I, you know, I think, I think all these things are well, well worth looking at and discovering. My hope, I hope you can do it before you have another one of these.
Yes, so I guess the thing here, which, which kind of struck me is how something that apparently is very simple, a simple word, just putting in a couple of words, you know, how, how, how easy could that be? Well, as it turns out, it could be kind of challenging. Yeah, yeah, Gordon, go ahead.
I heard through Leslie that her findings to date was that the county does not use that anymore. They go by square footage, and you can build almost anything, even up to two houses on a lot that's not suitable. It didn't make any difference what the frontage is on it, if you heard that or not.
Yeah, she did mention that, and I, excuse me, go ahead, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
Basically, it's, you know, overrides this other one theoretically, as long as we do the intent to serve letters. The county thinks it's hunky-dory and go by square footage, and that's when we get the permits released and then have to stop it by a the denial type of situation. Anyway, that's what I heard.
Yeah, and that jives with what I heard so far from Leslie on this. And, and what I did locate, actually, I could hardly believe it. I don't have the number right. It turns out the number of square footage for the minimum size for a lot in the county is very, very small.
Right.
It can be a twenty-five by a fifty-foot lot, whatever that multiplies. So somehow, there has to be language elsewhere that can override that in order for, for this, for our code to be modified. Yeah, yeah, Claudia.
Did Leslie mention how they managed to change that code and not let anybody know?
No, I, yeah, I think, yeah.
Their own rules, and we don't have to be told, is what I gathered.
Yeah. I mean, we want, you know, we've been looking into changing or updating the code, the CZLUO, and it's like, you know, pulling teeth out of a, I don't know, cat or something, just to get it on the agenda. And here, all of a sudden, you know, the code changes, and nobody knows anything about it. So I, you know, maybe we need to talk to Bruce Gibson and ask him how this happens, because if the community knew this, because the intent of that, that code was to not ever build on twenty-five-foot lots. On Park Hill with a side setback to three feet.
Right. It's, it's, it's a problem, but you know, Claudia, if we could actually find wording that indicated that intent, it might, here's still a problem, there's no guarantee that the board would even if we produce all this, because there is another question which the board has to deal with, and that is, and we're straying a little far afield here from it, from my reports. I'll try to, just very briefly, that becomes the issue of if the, it depends on who is going to have to bear the expense of a legal defense. And so if the, if the district decides to be more restrictive than the county, then, then the issue becomes that the district will need to, if, if the district's decisions are challenged, it's going to be up to the district to defend that, and then we have to worry about our rate, I mean, it just goes on and on.
Tell you, I had no idea, I had no idea, when I first sent that letter four years ago, that it would raise this much ruckus, but there you go.
It's kind of interesting, it's sort of like lifting up a rock, and then you discover all this stuff underneath it. Anyway, so just to, to charge forward though, so that one, we'll, we'll do what we can with it, but I don't know how far we're gonna get. So as to the others, yeah, what I want to do, and again, this is taking a little more time than I would normally like to take, but I think I do need to bring it up just as we go forward. What I want to do is the other projects, there's a number of them that I have chosen to postpone indefinitely. And before I read the list to you, wherever it went, I want to show you the wording of the latest bylaw change that the board has passed. So let me bring this up, and I'll share my screen. If I can find the bylaws. There it is. Okay, now let me share my screen if I can. And we go to here. There, can you all see that? Is that big enough?
Yes.
Okay, and you can see there's some change. I'll read it just to kind of emphasize, and bear this, this all in mind as we go forward. And admittedly, some of the language here may be a little obscure. This is our, what our charge is as of these new bylaws, is that we're supposed to review existing operational and governance policies that the board has identified as requiring assessment, update, or organization for consistency with other existing policies. So that would be the case where the board says, please look at this policy or that policy. B, however, is a little more broad. To, we are to identify potential areas of policy needs not currently addressed in the policy handbook. And we, in that regard, to develop a needs assessment regarding the impact due to the lack of the policy and the immediacy of need. And so I guess the issue there is, should we see something that is, that we ourselves determine needs to be addressed that is not currently addressed? We should report to the board that, of that fact, and explain in part of our report why it should be, why this lack should be, why this lacuna should be filled or something. And then the second paragraph is to provide to the board via the chair for definition of content, consideration of timing, needs, and approval to proceed in policy development. I have a little trouble interpreting that, but what I take that to mean is issues that the committee feels should be brought to the attention of the board, that the committee can by motion instruct the chair to, to carry some, that concern to the board. And then, of course, see as to, we support the other standing committees. So I just wanted to kind of, I can't really explain too much because I didn't, I didn't design the language, but this, that's my interpretation.
Well, you'll send that to us, won't you, Don?
Yes, actually, you should all receive, I'll try to locate the absolute clean copy. This is actually from the red line, but I think Haley has a clean copy, Haley. So maybe if you'd advise me at some point where I can get it, get that, then I can forward it to the members. Yeah, Gordon?
Well, it seems all it says is for further information from B, C, A, for further information on C, C, A. That's what it means. The board is going to define what we're going to look into.
Well, that's one of our things, but it does say that, that even the, where the word on item B there, where the board hasn't, that does the freedom, you know?
No, that's no freedom. It says regard, impact, lack of policy, and immediacy of need. So now we have to convince them, the timing, the effort, and whatever involves, has to meet their expectations of listening to it so they can approve it, instead of us providing it and wasting their time. So it's back to A is what I interpret that whole thing to say. Anyway, I thought.
What I, okay, and anyway, I just wanted to, the way I interpret it is that we're doing basically what we're supposed to be doing. I mean, there are some issues, but I've, I've taken the position that if committee members had a concern, and a majority of the committee wanted to talk about that, that we could certainly agendize that discussion. And then based upon that, the committee could, as part of that, as a result of that discussion, could move to instruct the chairman to carry something back to the board, saying we, this committee thinks you really need to look at a particular issue, and even to the extent of recommending a possible policy. I, I think it is within our purview, it's really more a question of how we use our time. And I think as long as we are doing A, item A there, and we're not falling down on that, in our copious free time, we can do, we can also work on B. But what we don't want to do is if the board says, gee, you know, you guys, where is the policy on X? You know, why haven't you done it? But we certainly don't want to say, well, we haven't done it because we've been too involved in trying to find other things for the board to do. So that would be my, so I don't, I think we're all right, that's. But what I did as a result of this paragraph, though, and also to kind of, so that we don't have this huge list of, of pin, of things that which aren't getting done. I've actually decided to postpone certain things indefinitely, and then we can talk about bringing them forward as we feel like it. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna just read you that list, I'm gonna stop the share here now, there. So here are the.
And Don, you will send us the list you're going to read too.
Yes, yes, so don't bother writing it down. Just remember that I'm, I better write that, well, here's my to-do list. I'm just gonna say send list of postpones.
Yeah, and a clean copy of what you just showed us, because I, I'm agreeing with Gordon, I think there's, there's some wordsmithing that needs to be done on B.
Yes, yes, no, that would be all right. So, okay, I got two items there. Okay, we'll keep this growing as we go forward. Yeah, Claudia?
Are we allowed to wordsmith that policy, or the, the document?
If we want to, well, they may not adopt it.
Right.
We can, you know, you don't, you don't give away your First Amendment rights or anything just by joining the committee.
Well, it just did.
Anyway.
I think the third, where is it at? Well, you don't have in front of me, but I think it was the third paragraph that was ambiguous. I think that could be written differently so that whatever they wanted in that is clear, because it's not clear, so.
And actually, here's the thing. Those bylaws are actually going to come up again around the first of the year. So there's going to be another shot, so the committee can weigh in, you know, on what they think the bylaws should be. I think the, the position the board takes is the board does a set of bylaws that applies to all committees, so committees aren't really allowed to set their own. Amanda and I were talking about this, and when the committees first started, as we were kind of working our way through this, that the committees did in fact develop their own bylaws. But subsequently, as, you know, two years down the road now, the board has decided to, for uniformity and clarity of that, that the board was going to make a set of bylaws that would apply to all of the, all three of the standing committees. So, but what that does mean though is that about every year, those bylaws come up for review, and it means that this committee, and it's, as it's presently made up, could certainly put forth recommendations regarding and since I suspect the bylaws will come up again in January, if not January, probably February, because the board has to do its own bylaws in January as well. So I don't know how that's going to work, but there is an opportunity. Remembering though, that the board can do whatever they please. Okay, here's, here is the list. So these are just, okay, I'm gonna find where it starts here. Okay, I'm just gonna read these off. So overview of the district clerk's, clerk's role. The legal counsel and auditor, some of these we haven't been touched for a long time, and they're just sitting there. Overview of the general manager's role. Legislative advocacy. Unlawful harassment or harassment. Whistleblowing. Process flow for new policies. Ethical and environmental, let's see, ethical and environmental concerns. Moving on. Maintenance and upkeep of Cambria. Twenty-gallon trash cans, policy for issuing I T S letters. Committee meeting float, no, no, that one erased, that was actually part of the, how use of surveillance cameras. I think that's it. Yeah. So that's the list of just what I've, just so we don't keep seeing these coming up again. And what I would like to do is an agenda item, not today, but certainly, maybe before the end of the year, maybe as our last meeting of the year, to just review that list and see, and some of it has already been prioritized, you know, but review it, possibly look at the priorities, and see if there's anything that we really seriously want to spend time on, or, or to bring to the board's attention.
We're on the top of the list, he started on day one, that's the problem, sir.
I, I think I missed, I'm not sure, Gordon, could you start over again on that, because I'm not sure I got the.
At least five on that list that started on day one that we first met, and those have been on there ever since, and they've all owned at the pleasure of this board. And therefore, we have never got the opportunity to move forward on these things that need to be discussed behind closed doors and management procedures that affect the community. So I don't disagree with you at all on those lists, in my opinion.
Okay, and Claudia, you had a comment?
One, you're gonna send this list to us? Okay, and then two, are all of these things not in the policy handbook? Are these all things that we've brought forward?
See, book. Some are in the policy handbook.
Book, that's why they were brought up.
CCS, not the CCSD handbook, but in the C S D A handbook.
Right.
Or, some of them are duplicated, or, or the C S D policy, there really isn't a handbook per se, but a collection. In the C S D collection of policies, there are sometimes things that refer to those. Part of that inventory that I was speaking of is to try to match up the two, to the two systems in order to find out what's missing. And as is John Roomba already did, a good amount, some of the, the, one, the one thousand series. So, yeah, but many of them, I can actually tell you where the list after, I don't know where whistleblowing came from, but everything else.
The first meeting, and it's on, it's in the manual also, for.
Okay, yeah, I see a number, but after that, the process flow, everything, all that other stuff from there on down were actually stuff that we had brought forward one way or another. But I'll send you the list, just so you'll have it.
Can you indicate which things are things that we brought up, and which ones are, where they came from?
Sure.
Thank you.
Taking a note, send list. Plus. Okay, I think I got that. Okay, moving right along, sorry to take your time there. That, that is the substance of my report. I just kind of wanted, I'm sorry to take so much time on that, but I just wanted to kind of, I felt that we needed to take a little time to kind of focus a little. So now, now charging forth with the actual substance of the meeting for today. We are ready for some, and does anyone have a, let's see, there was a possibility of a ad hoc committee report regarding homelessness. let's see, there was a possibility of a ad hoc committee report regarding homelessness. Gordon, did you want to do that? It's, I've also included it as an agenda item in case we wanted to actually discuss it.
Well, that's what I see is item C.
Would you rather have, it's, if you want us to discuss it, we can push it on down, but if you just want to report on it.
No.
Why don't you go ahead and report on it now? And then as we move down the list, then we can see if we can discuss it as well.
Why would we do that twice?
Right, that's what I'm saying. Put it down on, don't get to it. That's fine because it's, it's sort of a decent discussion as opposed to my report on it because of the different endpoints of our committee.
Yeah, well, just very briefly, it did seem to me there were, you, we had some, the committee can remember some committee can always produce multiple reports. There's the majority report, the minority report. Or let's say all of you disagree, then you could each do a report.
Well, we've, we divided up into three components, trying to put them together. And the ultimate outcome is that the question is not to have any involvement from the C C S D at all. And to eliminate entirely the homeless population on C C S D properties is the intent. And from previous presenting this to the board, that's circumstances. Prose is not interested in it, which is our conclusion, expectations of way to do it. But we've decided that as a general rule, we put things together of how not to do it.
Well, how not to do it is fine. That's, that's a particularly good approach. In fact, let, let me speak to that a little bit as we move forward. When you do policy, sometimes what you would do is you, you make a general statement saying, this is what, this is the, what we'll wish to have accomplished. Or this is how we wish to have it accomplished. You, you make a broad statement and then you say to the management, to the staff, you can do anything that a reasonable person would do as you interpret this, except and then you lay out the limitations. So you're not trying to tell people what to do necessarily. You, you tell them where you want to go or how you want to get, you know, let them figure out how to get there. But if there's some actions that you feel should not be taken, then it's appropriate to limit those. But I wouldn't want to try to necessarily tell staff every little procedure that they should do. Anyway. Well, let's move on with that. And then if we get to that agenda item, I, I did have, Leslie did send me a proposal which would be her report. What I would like to hear is a, if, if the others a, I'd like to hear a discussion about the different points of view relative to that, but.
And you have it on the agenda as three C.
Yes, so, well, we'll move forward to that. And if we, if we can get to it, we can have it. I was hoping that we might actually have a discussion. I don't think we'll have a consideration. But I don't think. Did I, is it discussion and consideration? No, it's just discussion. Okay. So if we, we'll finish this up at that point and I'll share with the rest of you what Leslie had sent to me. I think Gordon and, and Claudia probably have already seen it. Any other ad hoc committee reports that we need, that we need to have at this time? Yeah, yeah, Ted.
Yeah, I, I, I put together a re-summary of what I sent you and Claudia on the on the, the letter business. I, I'm going to send it, send it to you again in a, in a format. I think we can, we can present. Once again, very briefly. The policies, procedures, process that the, that Haley and staff, and I want to thank Haley again for such a wonderful job. Helping us resolve some of the questions that we had. Again, there, there's not any issue that we, that I, that anyway, I see, I'll, everybody else speaking themselves. Seems like the staff has their role in this covered very well. The issue then becomes, how do the directors want to, you know, to handle these sorts of issues? It does not appear that, that, you know, they're being besieged with letters in any way, shape or form, but it is just simply it would be just not, I mean, we're happy, happy to provide input for them on a policy. But without, without some direction from the board as to what they think is right. We're just, we're, we're tossing spaghetti at the walls and it doesn't make any sense. So anyway, I, I'm gonna go ahead and, and, and send that to you and then after, after you and Claudia take a look at that, we can disseminate that to the rest of the, the group. My suspicion is that's another one that until the board gets back to us. Then we're, we're kind of done with that one. And that means I'll be available to move on to another project.
Oh, okay, all right. So, and again, you raise a point which I, again, I want to emphasize. You know, just even to, to report back to the board that even if you don't have a policy, if you say, you, board, when you're thinking about this, you, there are the following concerns that we have. Or the, the, the deal is if, if it's just the board talking among themselves, that's, well, that's all well and good. But if, this is a chance for the committee to actually provide the board with input. So, so the board could, can, in other words, so just, and just the results of your research as part of a report to the committee or to the board of directors would be great, you know? So I wouldn't, I wouldn't, in other words, just because you haven't necessarily come up with a, an actual policy doesn't mean that the work is not valuable. And that because I think any input that the board gets will be valuable. Otherwise, they're just talking amongst each other and they can, it can get to be something of an echo chamber. So, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can, we can certainly fulfill the, the the action of writing a policy for them. That's, that, that's certainly something that's well within our capability of doing. But I just don't, I just think that it, it's presumptuous for us to say, oh, well, this is the way you should do it, when, you know, at the end of the day, there needs to be some agreement on, you know, who's on first, who's on second and who's record keeping.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, you know, and that's really gonna be, you know, honestly, maybe this is one that gets discussed after the election too. Because you're gonna have new board members, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah. True. Claudia, you had something to say?
One of your, I, one of the things you're supposed to have done that didn't quite get done was to talk to the board individually, not to break, you know, the Brown Act. And that would be to ask them individually what they do with correspondence when it comes just to them as individuals. And I think the, the most important aspect of this, and I keep saying over and over again, is how is it handled when a piece of of mail comes in by email or paper mail? How is an individual handling? How do we know that they received it and how do they know what they said about it or what they, if they responded? And the biggest complaint is that they're not, people are not getting responses. So I think that's what we need to talk to the board about and find out what they're doing. And, you know, it may not be a lot of, a lot of mail, but it, that's the key part of this is find out what they do with it. So think if we could, if we could determine that, we could move on with this and, and write a policy and, you know, and submit it and let them decide on, you know, you know, take, take a look and let them decide whether they want to keep as is or amended or whatever. But I think we need to move forward this. I think we're very close to a policy. So I don't want to back off of it. We're, we're too hard on it.
You know, I, let me weigh in one moment here. I, I think that, that the policy should cover what occurs when the office receives a letter to Don Howell, Director C C S D. And the policy should say that the staff member who receives it, you know, gives it to Don. But I don't think there's going to be a policy accepted by this board that says what Don has to do. Don is a politician. If I write to my congressman, I, I'd like to get a response. And if I don't, or I don't like the response I get, I won't vote for him again. I don't think we're gonna have a policy that, that says to the politician individually, who receives an individual letter, that he or she has to do X, Y, or Z. I want the policy to say that the director received it.
Well, I think we, thank you.
You on that. And the point is, is that no one knows when somebody gets a, a letter.
Well, that's different. That's, I think Ted's talking about that in terms of what the staff does with the letters.
Let's send, yeah, let, let, let's, let's move on, you know, yeah, it's, it's okay. But I think we can move on on that. Is that?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Let me send out what I have and then, and then we can move forward.
Yeah, and the other thing is, is really now this time I really will do it. It's just five, four phone calls that I need to make. I, I should be able to handle that. As, then just ask each of them what they do and that could be very interesting in itself, you know? So that I can do and get back to, that one should be, shouldn't be too hard. Let me see, any other ad hoc reports? Any, and, okay, well, let's move to reg, oh, time for public comments. I don't see any public here.
Do you have any public comments?
Yeah, Haley, I don't see any. You don't see any, do you?
No, and I have no public comment to read.
Okay, because you yourself are the public. You can make a comment. Or not, okay?
I don't have anything to say.
Okay, and I see John Weigald has joined us, joined us as well. Thank, welcome, John. So moving then to agenda item. The consent agenda, yes. It looks like we have two items on here. The, the, so it's, this is a consent agenda meeting that we, we just pass it with no discussion. One has to do with the, the approving the minutes of the last meeting and the other is approving the final copy of the, of the policy on grants. So does, do, if anybody needs to, if we need to discuss any of that, we need to pull it off of the consent agenda. So is it, do either, does any of you have anything you wish to pull from the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none, then let's move forward. May I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda? Don't all speak at once. Moved by Ted, second. Seconded by Claudia to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, let's let's just everybody raise their hand if you're in favor and wave it at me. I see one, two, I see all the hands, okay. Motion passes four to zero, one absent. Moving then off to the regular business. Oh, good, this is the fun one. I think we're almost, we should be ready here on this one. The discussion and consideration of the C C S D policy and procedure for filling a vacancy on the board of directors. So I've got a screen share on this one. Or we could, since there's nobody but us chickens here, we could just use your agenda. Do you all have a copy of the agenda packet? If not, I can, I'll just do a screen share, which is better. Screen share?
Screen share.
Screen share, okay. All right, there's three of them here. Let's do the, here's the general policy first. Let's see, we, we have the policy itself and then the rank order voting scheme. So here's the policy. Okay, let me share that. Oops. Where did it go? Here it is, here. Okay, let me get rid of this other one. Oops. Okay, can you, is that large enough? Can everybody read it? Okay, I'm gonna start at the top here just so we can all see it. Rather than read it out loud, why don't I just let you read it through it and tell me when to turn the page here. So here's the first page.
And the first page has really not been an item of our discussion in the sense that it, it is simply an expression or kind of government code.
Excellent. So no one has anything to say, we're-
Well, in the past, we haven't. In the past, we haven't.
I think we can go forward. Yes, everybody? Just yell stop if, okay. Let's see, here comes the part that we did, or where this is basically, so the parts that have been changed since our last discussion. I think the blue items were what we changed in the last time around. Remember, we removed the paragraph, the section about vacancies occurring with, close to an election. And then the other area here had to do with when public comment would be allowed. And we were saying that we wanted it after all the, all the and notice it says, public may address the board. So the, the public's not necessarily going to be allowed to ask the applicant's questions, but they are allowed to address the board. If a public member were to ask an applicant a question, that the, whoever the board chairman is, could rule that question out of order. So are you all with me on that so far? Okay. I'm sorry, one more time?
No, and somebody's got to, somebody's got to control the show.
Okay, yeah, somebody's got to control the show, right. So here's our part here now. This is the fun part. When what we said is, the, the change here was, had to do with making open, open. Let's see, what was the, I mean, here's the
The secret in there used to be that word.
And that, what we, it can't be secret in the sense that the, the public has to be able to know how people vote because of the Brown Act. So I, is it clear as, to say that by open ballot, namely? I, I guess the question is, do we need to say open?
Well, yes.
I'd say so, yes, I think.
Okay, all right. I, I sent some general agreement there. Okay, now, this is, I think, let's see, okay. So the question really here is this paragraph, it has to do with the rank choice. And so that we have a, a, a different write-up. So I'm gonna bring up, let me leave this on the, I don't know if I can share both of these at once. Let's, let me, what we're proposing though probably is the wording from for rank choice, I think this paragraph will probably need to be expanded. And this is what we had from Crosby and John, this, and I looked at it. If I can find it here, where did it go? That's not it.
Well, actually, Don, the, 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 I think the narrative in that paragraph is still valid. And what Crosby did was demonstrate how that works effectively with an example.
Well, what we found was, John, was that is in the example, let me see, I don't know if I can do both at the same time. Let me, let me stop sharing and then do it again.
Well, it's in the, the code there below, isn't it?
Say again?
I thought that was on the examples on the list.
It is. It's in the agenda.
Yeah, it's in your agenda package.
Well, it's supposed to be on that list too, I would think. I have the same list that shows the example. There it is.
Oh, there's the example. Let me get it up on the screen as well. It just happened there, yeah.
Yeah, we couldn't get the system to work with a typical, only one person. With four of them running and one gets one vote.
Yeah, this is where the problem came in was when I, when I tried to work it with, just as, as the original was stated, it just kept, kept coming up as a tie.
Right.
So this was Crosby's way out of that. So like in this one, if you took, you can see that all, except for, I, I changed the name to Sally from Tom only because we have somebody running whose name is Tom. So that will keep this kind of as generic as possible. So we see that Sally gets no one vote. So it would come down to the Joe, Mary, Bob and Mike.
Right.
When I tried to make this work just by, I, I just couldn't do it. The problem was in contrast to a, a full-on election, like for a supervisor or something, you, you have way more candidates than you have, oh, so you have way more electors than you have candidates. We have to come up with a situation where we may end up with more candidates than electors. And that's where you get into difficulties. So I, this is Crosby's try to kind of avoid this situation. It looked to me as a reasonable way to go. I, I guess the issue might be, supposing you had ten candidates. How would we do that, you know? I'm still scratching my head on this because anyone want to weigh in on this a little bit?
Well, what you've shown there is-
Yeah, Claudia, go ahead.
Well, go ahead, Gordon. You had.
Oh, you had your hand up. I didn't.
Oh, I, I just- Oh, I, I just that, you know, looking at this. Uh, graph, it doesn't look like anyone won, so. Then do you go from who, who had the first place and then who had the second place and then, but none of them have the most of any of those, so. Uh, I mean, I guess it's a, it's a good example to show how confusing it can be, so.
Well, let's say, so let's work through it. So first of all, you have four first place, so. So he has counting first places, you've got, uh, Joe, Mary, Bob and Mike, right? Joe, Mary, Bob, they all have ones. So we have a four way tie, so now we go, so we look at Joe, Mary and Bob, and we look at their second, so we see that. How does he do this? So Joe has a second, a second place vote over here.
Mm hmm.
And, uh, let's see, Mary has second here. And Sally has a second. No, Sally does a second, she had no first, so she doesn't count. So Bob has a second, so now we've narrowed it down to three. Because we've eliminated both Sally and Mike. Because Mike didn't have any second choice. So we, now we've got it down to three, and then going further then. Uh, we, we look at the three and we see for a third place. That, let's see, Bob has, yeah, here, for example, Bob has a one, a two and a three.
Mm hmm.
So that's three, and Joe and Mary, Joe has only a one and a two, and Mary has a one and a two. So they each have only two, and so under that scheme, Bob would have the, uh, the tie is broken and Bob would be elected. So I, I don't know if how that would, if you had ten candidates. Whether you'd be required to rate all, you could, I could conceive of a situation where. No, if you had enough, let's say if you had sixteen candidates and, and everybody ranked their choices one through four. You could end up with a situation where no candidate shared any votes. On the other hand, we can't allow for, I don't know if we can allow for every possibility. So, I just need, let's get your reactions to this and see what you think. Okay, Claudia, you first.
Well, from your description, it would work because you would just go, you might be, how many got the most fifteen votes, you know what I mean? It would just go right down the, right down the list in the first, one, two, three, four, five, six, you know, whatever. It, it would work, but it's, it would be, it's very cumbersome, but, but it seems fair, uh, based on, you know, what the board wants. Um, you know, so, you know, I don't know, I, I'm in favor of just another election, I, you know, it's just. You know, not, not really that expensive anymore, because, you know, you can do it all by, by mail, uh, by email and. And that was the only reason they didn't do it in the past is because, you know, you'd physically have to go someplace to vote, but. I think this idea of this, this whole, personally, I just think it's, they should just have another election, you know, so, but, hey.
So, Don?
Yes, yes.
I, I'll just follow up with, on what Claudia said. So remember, this policy, first of all. Um, all of what we're looking at now is avoided by the policy, if it's in, in a certain number of months, then you select the person. Who came in, um, second or third or whatever, you know, however many runners up there were. Secondly, the ward always has a choice through this policy to run an election, and I tend to agree with Claudia on this. That, that that makes a lot of sense, and in the past, that's not made sense primarily, I think, for fiscal reasons, probably.
Yeah.
So this, th- this scheme that we're looking at now, in my mind, would, would be the, the last choice. Or the last option available to the board, and the intention, if I recall, was that when the board found itself in a place. Having to do something like this, it, it was an interminable conversation with no, with no agreement, or ultimately, there was agreement. So I, I see this as a, a last option, but viable if the board chooses not to have an election, or first, if the board. Uh, is past the number of months stated here, where the runner up candidate from the last election would be appointed. Um, and then, of course, the board can always throw up its hands and say to the board of supervisors, you do it. So there are lots of options here.
Uh, yeah, Gordon.
My understanding from reading this is they have elected to pull out the last elections being considered. It's just anybody that's eighteen and a, a, uh, resident of Cambria can run. It doesn't apply anymore to that closest election, is that not right?
No, we kept that in.
No, actually, it's, it's, the problem there is, is the timing. Uh, what we did is, we haven't thrown it out, we kept the paragraph, but we're not asking the board to actually pass on that one. It's too close to the election, because what that would do is, at the moment. If you like, I mean, we could put it back in, I.
I've never understood the concern about that, Don, whenever that paragraph would be put in, it would still apply. I mean, I, I, I don't understand the concern.
The concern had to do with how it would get voted on right now.
And there's no, there's no vacancy, you know, someone's going to resign sometime, and whenever that paragraph's there, the same circumstance would arise.
True.
I don't, I, I just don't understand the concern.
I, I felt uncomfortable bringing it up right before an election when the candidates were already known. Because we would know that the runner up would have to be one of those four candidates.
But that's always going to be true, if, 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 if in six months, Don, if you chose to resign, we would know who that person is.
True. Uh, I guess. Yeah, it seemed to me, well, the, my original thought was that the, the real time for that, to bring that paragraph up would be one year after an election, so that. So that the current board who would be voting to pass that proposal. Would have no knowledge as to who that runner up might be after the next election. That was my concern, whereas right now, and in fact, right now and next, and during next year. At this point, right now, we know that the runner up would have to be one of four people. And after the election, even before the, when the new board would take office, actually, uh, first meeting in December, I believe, because the election gets. By thirty days after the, after, so. So it would be, the new board then would already know who that runner up would be. And, and we would be asking to vote on this procedure, and depending upon who, what that majority was, they might say, well, we don't want that runner up. You know, at which case the paragraph would die. So my thought was, let's save that paragraph until nobody's ox is being gored. And, and, and so my recommendation would be that we, that we hold off on that paragraph. Until, and bring it before a board when that, the board that would be passing it. Would be in the same state of lack of knowledge as anybody else, namely, they would not know who that runner, that much less, they won't know who the candidates would be. And they definitely would not know who the runner up would be.
Well, you're a director, you're a director and I'm not, and, and so I, you know, that, okay. But I don't think we should lose that, because I think we agreed that that was the, the most. Or the preferable option among the members of this committee.
Right, and, and well, I, I can, the committee can decide, I mean, you, I didn't want it to get just shot down. Because I was afraid it might be, but if you think, if you want to bring it to this board, uh, we can put that paragraph back in. And, uh, and bring it to this board, I'm just afraid, though, if they reject it, we're gonna have a hard time getting it back. Uh, that was my concern on that one. Uh, yeah, Gordon.
Well, why don't we put it in and say effective after whatever date, it wouldn't be effective this time.
Oh.
Yeah, I like that.
Oh, that's a great idea, I hadn't thought of that one. All right, um, let me see, does anybody have a copy? Uh, John, do you have a copy?
I, not in front of me, I don't, but.
Uh, okay, well, let's, um.
But putting that sentence, actually, it's a, a sentence or two back in would no, would be no problem.
Okay, so.
And then in parentheses, we can say, this action would not be, does not become operable until. And then you, you had a date in mind after a year, well, it would be a year after.
Yeah, so it would be not a, you know, a year after the election, basically.
Right.
So, um. Yeah, so let's do that then. I can take the, I can, I can take my copy and put it back in, if you like, I can do it.
You can just put effective date, such and such.
Yeah.
Okay, five, what is that?
Except, is there a election every two years?
Years, actually, uh, I think, John, you, you still have the, the.
I, I do, I do, I just don't have it in front of me.
Okay, so could you do that, would you?
I will do that.
Totally, so we're gonna put that back in where it says reserved, just stick that paragraph back in and then put a, a, another.
I'll do that and send it to everybody.
Excellent, excellent.
Thank you.
Now that gets us back to, now, does the original, which I don't have in front of me now, um. What, what are you guys seeing on my screen, by the way?
My eyes are terrible right now.
I think it's something in another language, I don't know what it is.
Yeah, let me, uh. How do I do this? Uh, what's going on here?
I think it got focused on or something.
Yeah, hold on a minute, somehow I'm, I'm in a weird state here. I seem to be sharing with nothing to share. Sorry, this is, I'm sort of feeling my way through on this, let me try this, oh, here we are. Ha, we're back, okay. So, uh, the other issue, I don't remember whether we included, um, anything about the board making a choices, whether to have an election, does the. Is there anything in there about that?
Yes, it's, it's actually in code above.
Oh, okay, no, never mind then, so, so that's taken care of, so all we're dealing with is, should the board decide not to have an election? And it's beyond a year after the last election?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh. What shall we do about that paragraph? Maybe, should we, uh, if, are you comfortable with using Crosby's solution?
That's the only one that works right now.
What about the explanation, was it clear enough?
Yes.
I think so.
Okay, so John, could you go ahead and make the appropriate substitution there also?
Yeah, yeah.
Excellent, excellent. So, um, actually, I think we could, uh, with the substitutions that we've just spoken of, without having to actually. Um, well, I can kind of summarize briefly. Um, I keep getting election messages here. I'll summarize briefly this, let's adopt it as a motion so that we can, we have an actual official action here. So if someone would like to move that the, um. The policy that we just talked about be adopted with the appropriate changes, as discussed, I saw Claudia with the hand up.
Don't move.
Okay, is there a second on that one?
Yeah, I will.
Okay, seconded by John, so it's been moved and seconded, uh, that. That the, uh, the policy just outlined with the changes indicated shall be adopted and. Um, passed on to the board, as recommended to the board. Uh, so any further discussion? Since we don't have anybody in the public, okay. Um, so let's go ahead and take a vote, all those in favor of the motion that I just stated, uh, passes unanimously four to zero, uh, one member absent. Very good.
I will, I will make sure I get a clean copy of that policy as we've just approved without looking at it directly. I'll get that to everybody tomorrow morning.
Oh, thank you, John, excellent. Well, this is good, so next one on our list here, okay, this is going to be Claudia's, uh, idea here, the discussion and consideration regarding outdoor and street lighting. And Claudia, I, if everyone has a copy, you don't, we, I don't need to share my screen, do, do you all have copies or shall I share my screen?
I have it.
Okay, everybody got a copy?
I think I do, hang on. Well, I had it, go on, go on, go on, don't worry, don't worry about me.
Okay.
Yeah, I know it's quite short, yeah.
Should I just go ahead and read it, or do you want to?
Oh, here, I'll put it up here, I'll go ahead and share it. Uh, I think this is it here. There, okay, can every, you all see that?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so first off, um, I just gave it a number under, uh, the section of, um. Um, hell, uh, section thirty-five hundred, uh, health, safety and security, it was the only place in the, the CSDA. Uh, policy book that, uh, seemed to make sense.
Oh.
Okay. So I mean, that was, so that was why that number, that's for that number, and it, it ended with thirty-five twenty-five, so this would be thirty-five thirty.
Okay.
And, uh, so, uh, we just started off with a, a purpose and, um. I went with a, well, beginning statement of, uh, kind of what, what the CCSD is in charge of, and just to, to reiterate that. And then, then we have our purpose for our policy to provide elimination for nighttime safety, utility, security. Employ, uh, lighting best practices and conformance with current applicable codes and ordinances, and those could be, uh, county codes, it could be IES codes. The international, you know, illumination, uh, society, it could be, you know, whatever, so just kind of all encompassing, just following codes. Uh, reduce, uh, district expense to the use of, um, energy efficient lighting, so that's one of the key reasons for the, uh, the policy. Is, and it was brought to me, well, you know, a year or so ago, and that was to reduce the overall overhead for the CCSD. And then minimize light pollution, including sky glow, light trespass, glare, nuisance, lighting to protect the health. Uh, safety and welfare of residents and visitors, so, uh, lighting actually is, is a, is a health and safety issue. Um, so this is why it's important, and then last, just mitigate adverse impacts on the nocturnal environment while preserving Cambridge real village character, and. We could add in, you know, protect the forest and protect the, you know, wildlife and things like that, we thought it was just, you know, keep it simple and just put down nocturnal environment, so we tried to make the. And make this policy, uh, very simple, straightforward, all encompassing, and hope that you, you agree.
Okay, good job, okay, uh, some discussion?
Yes.
Yes, John.
I, 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 there's nothing here I would disagree with. As, as content at all, but this raises for me the question that goes back actually to your discussion earlier, Don, about. The revised bylaws for this committee. Are we, I'm not aware that the board has requested, um, a policy regarding lighting, but that new, the new bylaws indicate. That if the committee believes that there is a need for or, or a gap in existing policy where this would be appropriate. That the committee, through you, could recommend that there should be a policy regarding outdoor lighting. It, and so that's where I'm coming from, I'm not, I, I don't think we should take a, action on a policy. Before we know that the board is interested in having a policy. I like the policy, no problem with the policy, but I just think my sense of how we operate would have, have us first go to the board with the idea of a policy.
Okay.
I, I have to say, of course, I, you know, I wrote it, so I, I disagree, I think that we should, if, if there's nothing that is offensive. In the policy, this, uh, then I think we should forward it, if you agree, forward it to the board and let them decide whether they approve of it or not, and then we can go from there, I don't. I, it's not so daunting of a issue that, I, I don't think it's going to be that controversial, I mean, we're asking them to, to uphold, you know, county codes and. And to protect the, the environment, protect, protect the safety of people and to save money, so, I, you know, I. For them to disagree with this, you know, is possible, and they can wordsmith it, they should, welcome to do that. But I, I don't think we should hold off until we ask permission to do it, we don't need to do that with the new, uh, with the new bylaws. And, uh, well, we're doing the homeless policy, that's not in the CSDA book, so we've done other policies that were not listed, and. Uh, this particular one was brought to me originally by one of the board members when he was president, so Pearson brought this forward to me. And Don suggested I write the policy, so I have two board members right now that are in favor of this. Uh, and like I said, I, I started doing it because I was asked, uh, about this, uh, by a board member, so. That's my opinion.
Oh, thank you, Claudia, yeah, Ted.
Well, it seems to me you have a proposal here for, for a policy. I think, I think in your, I, 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 I think this, I think this should be. You know, explored as to, since, since you do have board members that suggested this. Certainly well worth saying, you know, presenting this to the board and say, look. You know, we want, we're, we're really behind this idea of writing this policy. And I think that when you talk about the purpose and so on and so forth, you know, you can, you can, you can expound a little bit to say. You know, we, we're, we're looking to conform to county code and we're looking to, you know, conform to whatever, maybe give it a little bit more information. I think your headings are just fine, and I certainly have no disagreement with, with any of the. You know, the, the elements here. But I, you know, I, I think it would, it would certainly provide more impetus if. You know, if you, if, if, if the board said, boy, this looks great, let's write a policy. You know, on, on this one, but I, but I, but I do think that there is an overall question here, you know, that still is lingering. Because we haven't really had an opportunity to, to look at the second part of this new. Want to say, what we, what we read first was the bylaws. Yeah, you know, there's still some ambiguity there, but I think this should be presented to the board. Perhaps maybe, you know, you could provide some examples, you know, you know, to provide illumination for nighttime safeties. Utility and security and then follow that with an example from the county code or employee best lighting pa- practices. You know, maybe one example from county code, something, something so that they see that what, what, what we're looking to do here. It is to in fact, you know, to, to at least conform to county code in a formal way. That I guess is, is, is my two cents, but I do think it's, it's important for, well, you know, for there to be a two-way discussion. Between the board and this, and this committee, I mean, if we see something that, that there's an issue that needs a policy, we, we need to be able to. We need to be able to be the, the originating source of that. You know?
Gordon, Gordon and then John.
The. Thing in overall is very good, what I would think would be more enticing is it says employee lighting practice, best practices and core performance. With current applicable codes and ordinances, I would like to see a list of those which would support this arrangement. That would tell them already, are they agreeing with the codes or not, does that make sense? And why aren't they agreeing with the codes, so that puts it back in their lap where they should make a decision and we can move this forward. Without their acceptance because they're not agreeing with the codes. That's my thought.
Okay, John, John.
So, to the extent I have some disagreement, which I think is minimal, my point would be that this is good. And, and it can be wordsmithed, but I think it should be presented to the board as a proposal for a policy. And, and, and as those new bylaws suggest, there should be some rationale with this, and of course, this has its own rationale. This, the purpose statements are a rationale, and they could be fleshed out, I, I just. I, I just think that the, the order of our work and the order of the process of our work. Should have this go to the board as a proposal for a possible policy. And I certainly would vote for it in that context, and, and the cover memo, so to speak, could even say that this was. This was instigated through suggestion by board of directors members, you know, I, I have no trouble with that. So I, I do support it, I just have maybe a slightly different view than my colleagues on. On the order of our work.
Okay.
One other footnote here, and this would be a detail at some point in time. Claudia is correct with the thirty-five hundreds, but they actually refer to, to the welfare, security and, and benefits of staff. We'd have to find another, another place for that, but that's detail, that's.
Yeah, okay, Claudia, I think, and then Gordon.
Um, well, I was going to say that I, I think it's a semantic thing, you know, John is saying, correct me if I'm wrong, but John is saying that we should. Give this to the board as a proposal, but then all of what we give to the board are proposals, so. I'm not sure exactly what John means by, I, I don't understand the difference, if we're going to forward this to the board. We, i- if we ask them for, if they were interested in a policy on lighting, outdoor lighting, we need to give them something.
Exactly, I agree.
Give them something, so if we give it to, to them, we're going to give them this as, as a suggested policy. And see if this is something they want to pursue, but they, they do that on all of the things that we present to them. When we wrote this, I, I did have help from somebody who's an astronomer and, and, anyway, somebody who knows about these things. But when we did this, we did have a lot more detail, and we decided that it would be better initially to leave out all the detail. And just refer to codes, we had CZLU, we spelled it out, and we had other things in there that were more detailed. So we were thinking that we would present it simply, and then when we make the presentation to the board, we would give them. More details as to what the codes are, but I agree with, I think it was Ted that said we should include what the codes are. They're not that long, we also have a brochure that.
And not all.
That has those written down too, that we could hand to the board or send to the board. So, and anyway, the board will provide direction as to what they want us to do, so I think, you know. I would make, you know, I can't make, I, I won't make the motion because it's my, my policy, but I would suggest that we, you know, make, have a motion to. Present it to the board and just, and see how they, and how they respond.
Okay, Gordon, I think you had your hand up, and I have a suggestion once, once everyone's had a chance here.
Well, in the light of new guidance and direction from the board, I agree with John that this should be presented as a part B to the code to be presented. To the board by the chairman, therein for their solicitation, if they want to pursue it, with the backup information as it request. As to refer to A, is my point. So yes, I'd present it as a B category.
Well, and, and that's really my point, I, I, that's all I'm saying. And there is a difference, we, we today, we, the committee passed a policy to recommend to the board on grants. That's a fin. Point in time, that's a finished, polished policy that we're presenting to the board in total. Of course, they can reject it, they can amend it, they do anything they want with it, in this case though, I'm going back to the current bylaws that you. Shared with us, and this for me is an example, as Gordon just said, of B, and so I would first. Submit this with whatever additions we choose as a proposal for a policy.
Okay, I, yes, if I can maybe, I, I think, I think we can do it as everybody's, I think this will work. Supposing that we, can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, instead of, just with a slight modification, we would say a recommendation. There could be something they, the policy committee recommends. Or the following or something, and then, or. It was what I would do is I take the policy title and the number off, so it doesn't look like a full-blown policy. And I think what you actually have here is everything that would be needed, which is, you say, this is the area. The, the CCSD has this responsibility, and. The purpose, that's really the justification for a policy.
Precisely.
So this could almost be presented as a recommendation. Almost as is, with just very, very minor change. I, I would suggest something on the order of. That the committee recommends that in view of the fact that the district is responsible for our, outdoor lighting and those two applications. And in view of the fact that it is, and in order to, and then the purpose, in order to provide blah, 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 blah. The committee recommends that the board. I'm not quite sure how you would say that, what we're trying to say is that you have all these reasons that we think that, oh, board, you need a policy. And we'll be glad to do it for you.
Yes.
And I, I think what I would do, you know, so for Gordon and, and. In, in the issue of citing the actual code, I don't think you need it in this, at this level. I don't think you would really need it there, but that should go, when you do the policy itself, you would be having. These broad statements and then any kind of limitations that you wish to provide to staff in any directions as to. County code, that would be where you could get a little more specific, but I think Claudia have done a great job here, and I think we could just basically. Make this into, and I, let's see, I give the, my report, actually, I think I would do this as an agenda item. If you guys agree, I would present it. Not as part of my. Report to the board, but as an actual agenda item saying, this is the recommendation from the policy committee. That the board consider, discuss and consider. The policy committee's recommendation regarding outs, outdoor lighting, something, that's how the agenda item would read. If you're comfortable with anything like that. We need, need some kind of emotion, so, oh, yeah, first of all, Ted, yeah.
Well, again, I, I think, I think this is great, obviously, you've got a little, you know, cleanup to do with writing. I, I, I still would urge you, you know, and I'm looking into, at this section on purpose here. Just underneath all those, all those bullets, you know, add maybe one or two, you know, bits of. Of information to support, you know, the need for each one of those purposes, you know, when you say reduce district expense to the use of energy efficient lighting. You know. You know, the difference in cost between, you know. So low sodium vapor lighting versus, you know, a, a different energy efficient type of lighting, what does that mean in dollars and cents? Well, you know, or, or, you know, some, something to, just a little something to help support the purpose. Because that, that would give the board something to say, oh, I understand what that purpose is, you know, here's something that supports. Moving forward with that purpose, just, just a little expansion on it, I think, would, would help, I wouldn't go crazy with it, but. You know, just a little expansion, I think would be really great.
Okay, Claudia.
Okay, I'm just. I, I kind of get to agree with you just a little bit, the reason is, is that I don't know if that information is, is. Where you would put that, I think that would be in the presentation to the board as to statistics, the reasons why. Photos, for examples, I mean, there's a whole, there's a whole presentation that goes with this lighting policy that wouldn't. That wouldn't go into the policy itself unless, unless our committee, you know, wants that, or if the board wants that. They want statistics, they want to know what section of this easy LEO it's in, what are the numbers, would, and spell that, what those codes are. Thing is, is that these codes, the, the codes may be changed, and so therefore, we would, didn't want to put in, we can put in the current code. But we'd have to put language in here that say the current code at the time or something like that, so, you know, so just take that, just a little bit of explanation for you.
Gordon.
Well, you just said to yourself that this would be good for you to know, but we're on the committee and we don't know. So that's where I'm stuck, this is, I don't know what you're saying, I agree with Ted, if you don't tell us as a committee, how can we vote for that and say, wow, this is like. New Horizon in Cambria, the dark skies or something, but that's a nice word, dark skies, how do we get there? And, and what is we as committee are doing it because this is important to us as a committee, that's my thought.
So you want us to put. Do you want us to put in the code, in the policy, is that just entered, you want me to forward to you the information?
Well, I'd like to know the information because taking your word for what codes are appropriate, I have no idea what the codes are. You know, somebody could go say anything, and that's what I'm saying, it's like Ted is saying, if you say, yeah, you're going to save a hundred thousand dollars a year. Whoa, right away, this comes right to the top of the agenda budget, the financial budget would be very interested in that.
I have to tell you that it's a rather complicated issue with the saving. It is a savings, but it's going to take a little bit more than just changing out the light bulbs. Because it, it will entail a, an agreement with PG&E. And so I didn't want to put that in the, in this policy, but. Anyway, so the amount of money that can be, the problem is, is that the CCSD right now pays a flat fee. And if we reduce our energy consumption, which we could do tremendously by, you know, you know, few changes. We can renegotiate how much is paid, that was what Pearson told me originally, is he wanted to put in. Solar operated lights, and that would really reduce overhead, and that's not in here as to how we accomplish that, but I think that. You know, I can, you know, I can, I can give the info, I, I don't think I'm giving the information, I, I'm happy to do that, I can forward it to you, we can postpone this till next month if you want to. After you have the CZLUO code and, and a set appropriate codes, it also includes some lighting codes, signage codes, things like that. So go ahead.
Let's see, first, first John and then Ted.
Well, I go back to a few minutes ago when we said that we would be presenting a proposal for a possible policy to the board. I, I don't know that we need, we're not writing a policy today, but we're going to the board with information that would. Convince them that a policy in this area would be useful and appropriate. And I don't know that we need a lot more than this in order to take their reading on that. I, I, I don't know that we can do much more today other than to. Come to an agreement that we should recommend to the board that it consider a policy. On. Outdoor lighting.
I agree with you.
Something like this.
Ted, you had a comment?
Look, I'm, I, you know, without question, you're going to, if you, if you're going to present this thing, you're going to be presenting a lot of stuff in detail. That's not what I'm talking about, all, all I'm saying is, and I'm kind of segueing on what Gordon said. If you can provide. A, a wee bit, a wee bit of simple. Support for the purpose, that would be very, very good, I think, in terms of getting the board interested. And ready to say, yeah, move forward with, with the whole proposal, for example, and I, you know. You, without getting into nuts and bolts and all this and that, because that's what's going to happen in your presentation. I'm just saying, make me interested, make me interested in this with something. That, 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 that helps to push those purposes forward rather than just, you know, okay, so we're providing illumination. For, for nighttime safety, utility and security. To, to support that purpose, just something to add a little bit of punch to it. Just to, to peak, to peak their interest so that they do come back and say, yeah, let's get this going. It, it has nothing to do with, you know, some long thing until you get to a point where you're. Where you're actually going to present on this thing, and I'm sure there's tons of information to present. Keep it simple like you've done here, this is wonderful, it's nice and simple, but just a, just a tidbit or two. Underneath each one of these purposes, I think is probably going to help move this whole process forward, but you do what you like.
Well, let, let me jump in for a minute, Ted, maybe we can, I think what I'm, what we're hearing from you is that. As we're making this case, basically, so, and, and you feel that maybe that somehow we need to do something more to make the case.
Just, just.
Something.
Well, I mean, not, not like maybe what Gordon said, well, you know, you know, with roosting the lighting expense, you can save a hundred thousand dollars, well. Maybe you can't make that statement, but, but there may be something, something to help support the business that, yeah, when you do this. You're going to save a lot of money, and this is one small way in which you can do it, I don't know, I, I don't know all the nuts and bolts of this thing. And I, and I, and I, and, and, you know, the, the business of wordsmithing it down, or somebody's been doing some serious wordsmithing on this thing. Because it's nice and tight and, and, and. Brief, which is really good, but, but it just, to me, needs a, a, just something to help push those purposes forward. But, but it just, to me, needs a, a, just something to help push those purposes forward. That's all.
And one thing that I can say is that we can include the CZLU and I can spell out what that is, twenty three point zero four point three two oh. That is the code. That's the county code. I can include that and we could amend it and, and maybe forward it with that. We want to be successful with this. And it was up to, up to, you know, the majority of, of our policy committee, but you know, if we want to hold off and add a lot more material to this, I can get you statistics, I can get statistics on how much money it will save in the lighting. I just know that, that it will. And I can, I can talk about what other communities have saved in their lighting bills, but not necessarily. We have, you know, we've already demonstrated the savings in sewer treatment plant by turning off the lights. That is one area that John Alchen, I went to him and asked him it for two reasons, well, three reasons. Asked if he would turn the lights off at night on the sewer plant and, and I said, you know, and I suggested that they use motion sensors and but they're right next to a residential neighborhood. And so that's one. They are also right next to a riparian corridor and the creek, so that those lights are affecting the wildlife. And number three is just, it's a lighting nuisance and it, and it creates sky glow. Within about two weeks, you turn those lights off at night and made alternative, you know, ways of, of, of lighting that when necessary. They only light up when, when the people have to go there to do repairs at night. So it, it's one of those things that, you know, if, if that lighting, it's not like many other things that, that happen in this world that are difficult to change. With the lights, you just turn them off and turn them down or shield them. So it's, you know, but I can add, you know, that in and say, you know, how, how you, you eliminate glare, how you eliminate sky glow, you know, and it's in the code, but I can spell those things out. I, we have a, we have a beautiful Cambria's Dark Sky Initiative Committee created a brochure and it has all of this information. Has five basic reasons why you have dark skies and it has the, it has the current code on there. You can't see it, but it has the current code. So we could add in these, these things. We could add in the reason, the basic reasons why, and we can add in the code and we can give statistics as to what other communities have done, saving, the savings they've done and the safety issues. You know, like, we can do that, but I just think it makes, makes the policy too cumbersome initially. And so that's where I am. Okay.
Of Ted, before you, but let me chime in just before and then I'll get you. Let me make a suggestion. As I read this through, as again, considering that if this is our recommendation, how about we reckon, this is our recommendation and you say that CCSD is responsible for outlaw, outdoor lighting and these two applications, then, then what we probably need right after that is a paragraph. Why do we need this policy? And, and that may provide Ted, that may provide that what you're getting into a lot of detail, but is, here's your five directors sitting here saying, yeah, yeah, we're responsible, we know, but everything's fine. Why do we need a policy? So I think maybe Claudia, we need a paragraph right in there as to why we need a policy. And then once, and then you, and then the next section is that the proposed policy would fulfill these following purposes. But I think, yeah, what's needed, and I think what may be missing is why we need a policy. What's wrong with the way we're doing it now? Kind of thing. Does that make sense at all?
Yes.
And I, Ted, I jumped in ahead of you. Did you want to say more on that one?
No.
So Claudia, we're almost ready with this, but can I leave it, can we leave it up to you to put on a? I have an idea. Let's, let's try this. I'm going to make a motion. See if you guys agree with me. I mean, it is in order that the chair can make a motion. It's generally not done, but in this case, I move that this the material provided by Claudia with the changes that you see on the screen here be adopted with an additional paragraph which will describe why the policy is needed. And that we, with that paragraph, yet to be determined that, so it'll need to come back to our committee one more time. But with that paragraph in it. So that's what I'm, I, it's kind of a, basically I'm, I'm moving, we, we take it as it is now with the changes I've, I've made. And we delegate Claudia to produce a paragraph indicating why this policy, this is, this is the other part of what the bylaws are asking is the needs. In other words, why is this policy needed?
Okay.
I'll, I'll tell you what, I'll even put a little marker in here. Here we are. Okay. I'll send this back to you, Claudia. Remember, we're addressing the board at this point.
Okay.
Is that a question? Should I have a question mark there? Oh yeah, Gordon, Gordon, go ahead.
Well, through, just put that in there. Why don't you just say one sentence and we pass it on as a B for the board to be recognized this time and vote for it instead of waiting another month.
Scott, give me, give me some tech text. Why, why do we need this policy?
Okay, if somebody, we can provide that sentence.
Why don't we do that the whole month here? Then we could do like John is suggesting, we'll do this under the B. And then they'll say, yeah, we need it or not. And then next time we'll get it processed if they need additional information.
Well, we do need to say why it's needed. If you, if you're going to get them, if you want them to kind of send this back to you, you got to convince them that they need it. Yeah. We can, we got five, we've got one, two, three, five minds here. Actually, we could craft that sentence now, or we can leave it up to Claudia to produce for next time.
I, I think that if we do this together, that will be in agreement and John's a good wordsmith. So, you know, why, you know, John said last month, John said that he was in favor of dark, dark skies, but he didn't know whether we, it was appropriate for us to, to write a policy. Well, if you're in favor of it, John, why?
No, I'm not, I'm, I'm not opposed to a policy. I'm just, I'm speaking, I'm, I'm agreeing with the direction we're headed now. I'm not opposed to a policy.
No, no, I, I didn't say that. I said that i- if you're in favor of dark skies and in favor of a policy. And you're good at words, maybe you could start us off with a suggestive sentence.
I read the purpose statements that you created, Claudia. I read those as rationale for need.
Let's do that.
I mean, that, that's what they are. Those are, that is the rationale for need.
Right.
Okay, is that, how's, how is it now then?
Perfect.
John Weigold, would you like to weigh in on this, John?
Yeah, just a couple of thoughts I had. One is for sure, if we haven't done so already, I, I'd recommend running this by legal counsel. This, this is a really complex issue here. And, and we've been trying to pull together information for the better part of a year. But obviously we've got a few other projects on our, on our desks. So it's, it's not made the it's not made the priority so far, but we have, we have a really complex mix of lighting in town. So we ensure some lighting poles, we, we maintain some that others own. We own some of our own on Main Street, so it's, it's not a one catch-all thing here. It's, it's really complex around and I, we're, we're in the hundreds of of lighting that we have, some that we don't maintain, but we own and insure. So there will be requirements to engage with other entities such as the county on a lot of this. And so they have their own policies. I don't know if we've reviewed what those policies are. But any rate, the very least, you know, a big gauntlet to go through is, is legal review before anything goes to the board.
Okay, thank you.
Well, but
Yeah, yes, yeah, John Nixon, yeah.
But in doing what we're talking about now, we're not presenting a draft policy to the board. We're asking the board, is there a need for a policy on, on outdoor lighting? That's, that's owned and or managed by CCSD. So crafting the actual policy and, and John just made it sound as if it's going to be more complicated than I thought, but but, but actually crafting the policy itself will take more time. But I think this committee, if it's going to take on that task, needs to know from the board that the board wants an outdoor lighting policy.
Okay, so I, I think we're clear on this. So the, the question is, is this, is this document sufficient as it now is?
The only thing that, that you might want to add in that we, it, it would be to put down this coastal zone land use ordinance. This is the county, this is the county ordinance and it is legal and it is binding. But we have been violating this county code. So that's kind of part of it. I just, so the, the county code is CZLUO twenty three point zero four point three two zero. And I would suggest we add that in so that they can look that up easily. The coastal zone land use ordinance.
What was it again?
CZLUO, it's coastal zone.
Yeah, land use ordinance.
Yes, and the number is twenty three point zero four point three two zero.
Here, how's that?
And I would say including that one, but there are other ordinances that would be applicable, but that would be, that's the major one. Yeah, you can just, it's easy, you know, including, yeah.
Okay.
That's good.
Did I not spell that right? Okay. Is this good?
Yeah.
Okay, remember, this is only a recommendation. Yeah. So as, as, as John Weigold said, and, and this could be a huge amount of work to actually craft something that was really, so we don't want to do that huge amount of work and then have it just, you know, being ignored. So I, this is a good insurance against that kind of thing happening. So does anyone?
I'll second, I'll second your motion, Don.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that the fault, that this document, as you see it on the screen here, be adopted as a recommendation to be sent to the Board of Directors at its earliest possible. At, at the, well, just send as early as possible to the Board of Directors. We can say that I moved that the chairman be instructed to take the blah, blah, yeah, something like that. Okay. Moved and seconded, I think John moved and Claudia seconded.
Other way.
Claudia moved and John seconded.
Don, on motion.
Sorry. Oh gee, how many people are there? Okay, so any further discussion?
Yes, what, if you can clarify what additions you think that you need to add to this, that we can be thinking about this in, in the future. I mean, we have all the information you want and probably more, except for the, the, the exact numbers. We actually have a spreadsheet of all of the lights and who owns what's lights. And we are doing it in the middle of a survey, I know we, but the, this dark sky committee is in the process of doing a survey and analyzing the, I mean, looking at them, taking photos and, and making notes about them. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of statistics behind this and I think all of the, all of the policies that we write, that we suggest and that the CCSD approves, all goes to legal counsel. So I think at this point in time, we don't need to do that. There's, there's nothing in here that would be, that would violate a, a legal code.
So so when the board approves Don's recommendation to his peers that the board, that, that there should be a policy on outdoor lighting, then Claudia has already done a lot of the homework.
Exactly. Yes. So, yeah, I think it'll work. And Claudia, what we, what you could do is once I, we can get this onto an agenda and find out which agenda that's going to be as part of the presentation, additional documentation could be provided. And even, and committee members could be invited to speak in favor, you know, and not only as a member of the public, but as part of the actual presentation of the, of the, of the item to the board. Remember, it would be largely could be presented by me, but then I might, or whoever the chairman is, but then the chairman can call on any committee member to fill out their report as well. So the way, so Claudia, the thing to do here is, once we know, we'll, we'll get this, once we get this in line to get on an agenda, then that gives you time to, to prepare whatever other documentation. Either to give that to whoever's the committee chairman at the time, or just be prepared to present it yourself as part of the, because what we want to do is convince the board that they need such a policy.
Yeah.
Then worry about the nuts and bolts.
And I, and at that time, we also want to have some visuals as to maybe what is existing like the lights at the Bets Hall, for instance, and how that could be made, made better. Okay.
It's a great opportunity. So I, it's been moved and seconded. Do we have any, no for any further discussion? Okay, we're ready for a vote. Those in favor, please raise your hands and wave them at me. Okay, unanimous vote, four to zero. So this will go, and what I'll do, Claudia, let me make a note here, first I'm going to save this thing. So I'm going to send you, Claudia, the no, I don't even need to. It's ready to go. I don't need to send this to anybody. This, this is getting, this is ready for the board.
Yeah, you just need to send it to me so I know what you added to it.
Yeah, 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 right. You're right. Send Claudia. Thank you.
You said you made a couple of typo fixes or something in there too?
Somewhere, but I don't recall now because it, yeah, I didn't do a red line on it. Sorry.
Okay.
Final lighting. Recommendation.
I know you took off the, the, the policy number.
Oh, yeah, yeah, because we didn't want to make it look like a done deal.
Right, okay.
We're trying to, you know, we want to be sure that we are, we, we respect the board's, you know, the boundaries. And we don't want them to think we're getting ahead of ourselves here.
So should we be, or should I, or we be looking at what, what kind of policy number we could give this?
Let's wait till we get it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, I mean, there are so many other details. That's probably the least important of all of the details.
Okay.
But as we, I'll, I'll, I'll be in touch with, as we get forward on that, we can talk about the numbering. So good, good job, people. So we got that one done.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Okay, so that one's, let's see, what's, uh, next one is the homeless. And then we do want to spend a little time on future agenda items, so let me stop the share here. So let's just spend a, a short amount of time. Any further discussion about the issues regarding the, I mean, the, the, from the committee, the, the ad hoc committee regarding the, the people experiencing homelessness? Do you have anything more to say at this point? I, I can, yes, yes, go ahead, Gordon.
Earlier, we've been having several approaches to how to resolve this. And I think General Manager Weigold originally put together a four or five page information of how to get the homeless out of the CCSD properties. And then from there it branched out into, we're going to find the side where who is going to do this. And that's when we got into the program of trying to determine, well, if pros got involved and did it as grants and whatever, as through other agencies, not the CCSD, but like San Luis Obispo or one of the agencies existing and working through them and say, here, this is what we need in our area for homeless. You take care of the mental capacities, moving them out, it's awful, the CCSD property, but helping them within the community of San Luis Obispo. That was one approach. And we didn't get any bites on that opportunity. So the next one was, okay, let's just eliminate it from the CCSD's responsibility entirely and throw it back to the county and do whatever. And that's what Leslie's last comments are, if you wanted to read that. And then I'm not quite sure Claudia had some comments of still maintaining the CCSD activity that she may want to comment on.
Okay, let's see, Claudia first, and then I guess I'll put up Leslie's thing just so that others can see it. And then maybe we just leave it at that for today.
Right.
At least it kind of shows the areas of concern. So yeah, Claudia, you first.
Well, first of all, you know, Carlos is hasn't come back to work. And so we're kind of in a, a bit of a quandary without his leadership. Alberto has taken over the responsibilities. They're not even working full time. They're kind of Alberto has taken over, uh, the responsibilities. They're not even working full-time. They're kind of, some days they're by themselves, other days they overlap. Maybe you know this already, so, um, I, I, you know, there's rumors going around that maybe Carlos won't be coming back, and he's the one who's created a lot of, uh, you know, he's, he's the one that's been cleaning this up, and he's been, he'd been buying the porta potties and brought it in the dumpster, and, uh, so I, I'm feeling a little bit at a loss. That's, just to say that in the beginning, I feel a little bit of a loss because we've lost kind of our leader in this. And he was also attending the, um, the, the homeless meetings in San Luis, well, Zoom meetings. So, um, so having said that, um, this, uh, suggested, uh, policy, uh, the only that, that needs to be done is it needs to include, um, that documentation. Uh, because I, I got to the end of it and I went, oh, what, what, you know, what is it? So that needs to be done and it just, it needs to be attached to it. Um, we, the situation has become so horrible because, uh, they've closed, they come through and they cleaned out other areas and Paso Robles, now Paso Robles wants to, they want to, uh, use a, uh, Motel Eight, or, you know, to Motel Six, or there, there is a number, some number, yeah, Motel Six as a homeless place. Well, I don't think, you know, personally, I don't think that Cambria has the facility to be able to house homeless, uh, but we can send them to someplace else. We can send them to Prado, we can send them to Motel Six. Um, but it is really imperative that we get going on this right away. We have people that have come with their sofas and their chairs, and they've got a, a network of, of people saying, come to Cambria, because we'd be kicked out of Los Osos and Morabey, and we kicked out of Morabey, and we kicked out of, you know, Atascadero, so I'll go to Cambria. And so the, the problem is so horrendous that we cannot postpone this. We really need to, to, to do something, you know, immediately. Um, and, uh, you know, we can, you know, it's a legal issue, but we just need to call in the sheriff and, and start, start doing this, or else it'll get so far at hand that we will not be able to stop it. So anyway, that's my little soapbox.
Okay, all right. Yes, John?
And all of that, all of that says to me that it really isn't the purview of the policy committee. It, it, it really has, I, I see no implications for, for CCSD policy. I have, I see implications for CCSD action. Um, and, but I don't see any issue for a policy.
Okay, um, oh, yeah, Ted.
I'm afraid I have to agree. I, I think this is out of CSD policy realm. I think that there is, that, that, obviously, we must, uh, to encourage, you know, the, the entire county, um, I don't, you know, honestly, you know, that's why I sent you guys that article on that makeshift, uh, housing situation. Um, something's gonna have to happen to, to be able to, to bring these folks that are, that are homeless into some situation where it is safe for both the public and for them to, to, to exist cheaply, uh, somewhere. So, you know, we're not all threatened, but, yeah, I don't see this as a policy for the CSD. I, I, I just don't.
Uh, let me respond a little bit and then, uh, well, Claudia, you first, go ahead.
Um, we're talking about the, um, land that the CCSD owns. We're not talking about all of Cambria. And the CCSD definitely has, has responsibility for their own land, to preserve their land, to preserve the creek, preserve the ocean, uh, and to stop them from chopping, you know, trees down on, on, on their land. What do you do if you don't have a policy about this? You just let it go? You let Carlos, you know, do whatever he wants? And now Carlos isn't even working anymore because maybe he did something that somebody didn't like. There was no policy to guide him. So he did the best he could. He did the humanitarian thing and he provided some cert, some, you know, water and, and toilet and, and a dumpster for them, which was probably the humanitarian thing to do, but it's created a different, bigger problem. But I, 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 it just flabbergasts me. You don't think that we should have a policy, that CCSD shouldn't have a policy on homeless? I mean, this is, this is such an overwhelming problem. Are you gonna just leave it up to the, the sheriff to, on the road, come to Cambria and, and clean out the homeless people? I, I don't, what do you suggest if we don't have a policy?
Okay, let, let me, uh, pardon me, Ted, let, just in the interest of, I, because I see our time is getting to the end here, um.
To put a list, it's a summary, you might have some idea of, of potential.
Yeah, um.
Maybe not.
Well, no, Leslie's thing is actually quite good, but I, again, because we just really don't have time unless we extend it, and I, I don't, I don't think we're gonna get very far with this today in any event. But here's why a policy is needed. Uh, is that there really was no policy. And, and if the policy is there shall be no camping of any kind on CCSD property, there has not been, that's never been enunciated. And if that's the case, then there maybe should also be a policy that all CCSD properties should be posted. That, you know, and furthermore, maybe there should be a policy that is, as soon as anyone is, is spotted, even commencing to camp, that they, that they be informed, uh, that that's not allowed and that they be assisted in moving on. There hasn't been any policy at all. So, uh, Claudia actually is right. Uh, Carlos was left without guidance and in his own humanitarian way, wanting to accommodate and, and achieve cooperation amongst, uh, some of the campers. Uh, they were actually being allowed to stay when they probably should have actually been removed immediately. So there are some issues there. Uh, I'd like to move on with this one, though. Uh, what I think we'll do is make sure that you all have seen what Leslie has sent. And, and then we will be raising the issue basically is how, how far do we want to go with that?
Let me just, one comment, Don. There, there are clear policies. The, the, the Fiskley Ranch Preserve has clear policies on what can be done on that property and what cannot be done on that property. And camping is not allowed, and it's a very clear and stated policy.
Yes, it, it just may need to be brought forth and made more obvious or something, uh, so that, because Carlos wasn't really enforcing that policy, and he may not have really known. We don't really know. Uh, yeah, Ted.
I, I was just gonna say, there are ordinances, and, you know, there are county ordinances, yeah, so.
So, uh, yeah, yeah, go ahead, Claudia.
Okay, so there's a county ordinance, but the county ordinances are only enacted if somebody complains. So are we gonna just wait for somebody to complain because there's a homeless person on the Fiskley Ranch, or do they just kind of ignore it and walk the other way? Many of these camps are actually hidden in the Fiskley Ranch. You can't even see them unless you go deep into an off-trail to get to them. So how are you gonna complain about something you don't really see it? So, you know.
But a policy does not fix that.
The policy, but would ha, would give somebody within the CCSD authority to protect their land.
They have it. The policy on the Fiskley Ranch is very clear. CCSD knows its policy.
Well, Carlos was left without direction, and if there was a clear policy, he, he would have been following that policy. Instead, he was, he was the, you know, without the O R.
I cannot speak to the actions of one employee, but the policy is well-established for almost 20 years, and it's clear to anyone who works at CCSD.
Okay.
Plus, we have, I'm sorry to tack out of the time, plus, there are other lands besides the FFRP that the CCSD owns.
Yes.
No, there are some issues. Uh, I, I think we'll eventually be able to put this to bed, but I think it needs to go around one more time. Uh, actually, if we could have a motion to extend for 10 minutes.
Awesome.
Second, anybody second? Okay, Ted seconded, moved and seconded to extend for 10 minutes to four forty. Uh, all those in favor, please indicate by raising, raising hand. Motion passes unanimously, four zero. Uh, I think maybe to put the final cap on this discussion, since John Weigold is here, and he was discussing with me the problems in, uh, dealing with the homeless, which are out there, what we thought was county property, and turns out not to be. So, uh, John, can you weigh in on this and let the committee know what's been done so far?
Um, so this regarding the, uh, encampment across the Bets Hall.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we've confirmed that, I, I think we've pretty much confirmed that's on CCSD property, and the next step is to, uh, start working through the process, uh, starting with the sheriff. For evacuating.
Okay, I remember you were talking and you were kind of dreading the, 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 the issue. Apparently what's happened is that a lot of, a lot of folks, when they got moved out of Los Osos and Paso, ended up here. So it's, it's rapidly escalating. At any rate, uh, yeah, Claudia.
I just said, they also closed down, uh, the Bob Jones Trail. They kicked.
Yeah, right, right, yeah.
Out of there.
Yeah. So is, this is going to be an ongoing problem, and it's not gonna get better, not for a while.
We, we're, we are also looking at, um, um, from a fire fuel reduction standpoint, um, basically clearing out up to six, six or eight feet above the ground.
Ah.
But the caveat there is we're in a riparian area near the stream. So you typically need a permit for that.
Right.
Um, now you could argue that, um, what's worse, uh, the pollution from the encampment going into the stream, or, or, you know, potential cutting of natural brushdown. But any rate, we're working through that also. It's another bureaucratic piece and component to this whole thing.
Yeah. Okay, so as the saga continues, uh, okay, in the last few minutes, uh, understanding that this needs to come back one more time, I think, uh, and I think we can put it to bed. Uh, the issues are becoming more and more clear. And as humanitarian as we might, we might want to be, we are still faced with some very serious problems, uh, that we ourselves probably cannot solve, much as we might want to. So, uh, and we may have to, that, yeah, Claudia.
Well, I, I, I'm sorry, I just want to, John just said that, uh, they're looking into having the sheriff do something about the, the homeless. When are they going to do that? Is that something that's gonna happen like tomorrow, or are they thinking about it?
I don't know. Nice to see you, John.
So, um, yeah, the sheriff has to go in and, and do their, their notifications. We have to post signs for seventy-two hours. We have to, uh, line up, um, uh, some contractors to help us remove all the, all the, um, encampment, um, belongings. Then we have to make those encampment belongings available to the campers to retrieve their gear. Uh, we have to move that stuff back and forth from our storage area. Uh, and there's also, lastly, but not least, we don't have enough money in the budget to do all this right now.
Right, yeah, Ted.
I'm only gonna make one last comment. John, I'm gonna send to you an email that I sent to everybody else regarding a very interesting idea for, uh, cheap, uh, places for these, uh, folks, uh, to live in. Um, I, you know, who knows how, what the costs are that you're talking about incurring with all this. Um, and perhaps I'll just send you this information. Maybe it's something for you to consider. I don't know.
Yeah, the only cost for us is removal of the, uh, of the stuff.
Yeah, right.
Some of that's their belongings, some of it. Um, you know, the, the other big issue over there is the porta john and the dumpster are, you know, while they're a good, good thing to have during COVID, they're also an attractor. Um, but regardless of all that, we're gonna have to remove those before the rainy season because we won't be able to get vehicles in there, uh, during the rainy season. So, uh, we're probably gonna have to get rid of that stuff over the next month and a half.
Anyway, I'll, 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 I'll send you this, because it was a, quite a unique and good idea, so, something to think about.
Don, I'm gonna have to leave the meeting in about five minutes, so.
We're gonna go inform it, so, okay. Yeah, very quickly on future agenda items here, uh, let me pull this up for a second. Yeah, anywhere to go. Yeah. Nope, that's not it. There it is. Okay, so what I need to do, I'm gonna share my screen again. Yeah, 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 yeah. There we are. Okay, just looking at the agendas coming up real quick here. Can y'all see it?
Yes.
Okay, uh, so we're now, uh, we're looking at November. So, uh, purchasing policy here is really, I think what we'll do is actually not the whole policy, but I'd like to try to look at, and I might give you, we've just been thinking about it. We may be able to do this as a committee as a whole. Uh, just talking, this is why we got the purchasing policy originally was, has to do with purchasing equipment. So I think we'd like to discuss that, and maybe, I think we can, in a few sentences, get that one taken care of. Uh, I have hopes of being able to talk about email management. Homelessness coming back then for hopefully the last time. Correspondence to the board for the last time. Anything else that we need to add for that meeting? Are we good? I, I see, I, I, it looks good. Looking ahead into December. I don't see anything here that any, you know, you guys would really care about. So unless you have anything more to add, uh, either to December or to, uh, or if you want me to take anything off of December's, I think we're probably not gonna get to conservation and ethics. I don't think, highly unlikely. So I'm gonna move that one. Um, so right now it's just possible, possibly surveillance cameras, plus whatever we left over from this meeting.
Right.
Okay, I think in move that, we've got one minute, and then John has to leave.
I do, and, but, Don, you're gonna send this copy to us as well, right? This list, if you haven't already.
Oh, yes. Yeah, I will. The list, I'll, I'll send you the tentative agendas, the list of everything that's been postponed. And then I'll try to remember, ma, if, if after a week's time, you're still waiting for something from me, please, please email me back. Because I do tend to lose track of time. Because, since I'm not, I don't have to go to work every day, and it, it's, if it has a Y in it, it's today. And that's just about, so I'm having a real problem. So if, if there are no further, uh, things, I thank you all for your attendance, and nice to see you all healthy. Uh, our, uh, let's hope that Leslie is okay, and, uh, please, uh, Gordon, please pass my, our concern on to her that she gets better. And I hope that it's not COVID. All right, okay. So thank you all, and, uh, thank you very much. I look forward to seeing you all in a month, if not sooner.
All right.
Thank you, Don. Thank you, everyone.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.